Could you please rock, I got my book open. I make the motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Please rise to the plate.
Which stands for the nation of God.
Thank you very much.
All right. So Rich just came back in. Sorry, right there.
Yeah, okay.
But we're at the point where we're going to bring the meeting over to you.
Okay. And I don't know if everybody realizes, but this is actually school board recognition. October 18th through 23rd is school board recognition. I'd just like to read a little something to acknowledge you guys. The New York State School Boards Association recognizes October 19th through the 23rd as the school board recognition. It's a time to promote an awareness and understanding of the important work performed by school board members. The East Hampton Union Free School District is joining all public school districts across the state to celebrate school board recognition. To honor local board members for their commitment to East Hampton and its children. Our schools are an integral part of our community. In fact, they are the heart of our community. Some examples which show this are the senior scholarship awards night and our special graduation ceremony. Strong schools build a strong community and members of the school board devote countless hours to make sure our schools provide the resources to remain strong. They make the tough decisions every month and spend many hours studying education issues and regulations in order to provide the kinds of accountability our citizens expect. Even though we make a special effort to show our appreciation this week, your contribution is a year-round commitment. The members serving our district in their years of service are as follows. J.P. Foster, president, is in his eighth year. Thank you, J.P. Nina DeSante, vice president, is in her ninth year. It is Jackie Lowey's 10th year. Thank you, Jackie. Karen Marty's 3rd year. John Ryan's 23rd year. Sandy Worples' 8th year. Thank you. For once again, just thank you. Appreciate it, especially in this world that we're struggling with now. The time, the hours and energy you put forth, we really do appreciate.
Would you say nothing?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congrats.
Thank you.
And part of J.P., when we were speaking, we thought just to have actually before the board motions are in, just to review the administrative transition plan. Congratulations to Beth Doyle. She's got a promotion and she's moving into an assistant superintendencies position in another school district. So we just decided as administrative team and school board the following. We're thrilled that Karen Kuhn is willing to take the challenge and step forward. She's going to be moving into an interim appointment. At this point, we really felt it wasn't the right move to start a whole search. I think we need the continuity of the program. We'll do a search, I think, when we get more towards the end of her interim appointment, which is in June 30th. So we're thrilled that Karen is going to be part of that plan. Jill Collins is going to move up. She was the dean of students. She's moving up to be the interim assistant principal at the high school. And thank you, James Crenshaw, for helping with these moving parts because he's kind of taking a bit of a hit. Adam left this year. I mean, he, you know, had a legacy of 10 years. Tim Fromm came up as the assistant to the superintendent, helping us get through this COVID crisis. And so Jill is moving that way. And also we have Ralph Nagliari is going to be the dean of students. So I think we have a pretty strong team placed at the high school. So just wanted to give a little bit of a preliminary sketch because we'll see the board motions, but I think it was one of our more urgent situations that we did find a solution for. So.
Thanks, everyone involved. Because it takes commitment from each and every one of our administrators to make things work as the game changers. So thank you.
And I think it was just mentioned, I think it's important. I think part of our recent years, we've been really cultivating our own staff to become administrators. And I think we're showing the rewards of that initiative. So I'm very pleased that way, that we're able to tap in on our own folks that know the culture. The bottom line is the culture of our school district is very unique. And I think folks that understand that have a much better chance of making the type of changes that we expect. So thank you for listening to that little bit of introduction. What I'd like to do now is hand over the reign to Adam Fine, our assistant superintendent. And he's going to talk about some of the, you know, what I think is on everyone's mind is how we continue to proceed in terms of reopening. I just want to be very clear about this. One of my most important moral principles is, and I truly believe and I try to hold true as much as I can with this, but making the well-being of our students our fundamental value has to be involved in every decision-making situation. So the well-being of our students, and Adam's going to present some of our thinking in terms of this. We've spent scores of hours thinking about these plans, working with our health professionals. And thank you again to the board for the hire of Wendy Euring, who's been such a valuable asset. Just today, we found out that we have a fourth COVID positive case down in the elementary school. We were just informed by Hampton Bay School that 47 of their students have to be quarantined. We're not sure how many positive cases are there, but in their band class, because of the way the schedule is configured, 47 students will be not in school. But we're trying to be as careful and again, nearly adhere to the safety and welfare of our students as a primary value. I think Carrie has a presentation she could share on the screen if possible. If not, I'm going to start walking anyway. So, you know.
Excuse me, Adam, before you do that, Matt, it says host disabled participant screen sharing. Can that be adjusted, please?
Well, that should be adjusted on your end, yes?
I'm trying to share it right now and it's saying host disabled participant screen sharing. That's you guys.
Hang on, Carrie, I'm sorry.
Maybe you can get Jason?
To go to wiggle on to, hey Carrie, this is Jason. Now we're over here at LTV.
Hi, Jason.
I can't hear you, so I have to go get the headphones. Hey, so when you go on your screen right there for Zoom, if you hover your mouse over, you should see a thing on the bottom that says share screen?
Correct.
Yep. And hit that for me?
And when I click, yep, and when I click it, it says host disabled participant screen sharing.
All right. That doesn't sound about right to me.
Nope.
Yeah, because I'm, let's see.
Can we do this far? Yeah. We can, I can start while I'm waiting. So I'll read it out to the public in here in any way. So one of the things, you know, as we go forward, we're about seven weeks into the school year now. As we get to our 10-week time where we said we were going to look and survey the parents of where we need to go, we definitely believe, you know, the models are running smoothly from a technical standpoint. Do I think these are the best things for kids? Absolutely not. We want all of our kids back here safely. We want them with our student, with our staff safely and functioning as a normal school. We understand that that's not possible. So some of the considerations, and I'll read this to the public so they understand, we're looking at our students in safety. We're looking at classroom size, class size. And one of the things that is a must is social distancing. That must remain in every classroom. That's non-negotiable. We are looking at staffing, our students' social emotional well-being. I've spoken to a number of parents. That's obviously very key and important to them as well as myself. Additional to student academic growth, including student regression and struggles that they have in the live stream and remote models. There it is. Carrie, second slide. Screen time obviously is an issue. The cleaning of buildings and the comorbidity of COVID-19 and the flu. So these are things that we kind of took into consideration as we looked at the model. So for us, we have a number of things I listed out. The next slide, Carrie, the third slide. So these are really the options. I'm really specifically talking about the secondary level. I'm not talking about the elementary school. The elementary school is already potted and running effectively. So these are some of our choices. We could leave things to status quo. We can look at our additional alternating Wednesday, which gets the kids in both buildings an additional, I believe, two times a week at least. Creating four cohorts from the two existing cohorts. That's explained on the fourth slide, which again, I'll leave for later. We can return with pods in the middle school if possible, rotating teachers. We could do full selected grade return, level returns in the middle school and high school. These were the options we were considering. And when we went through all of the options of what's possible with our class sizes and building sizes, basically full return with pods in the middle school and rotating teachers, it's not possible due to classroom size while maintaining social distancing. Full selected grade return at this point is also not due to the physical structure of the building. Different grade levels have different number of kids in it. So those kind of things that weighed in our mind in our decision-making process. What we're looking for now and making a recommendation going forward is we are recommending the Wednesdays after the 10 weeks. We admit that the Wednesdays, the alternating Wednesdays be immediately put in place for both the high school and middle school, starting right after the 10 weeks. So the kids would come in alternating Wednesdays, the principals and assistant principals would work out those schedules for the, for those two buildings. In addition, we are on the cusp of flu season. So one of the things we really wanted to do, we wanted to do it fast because we thought of the feasibility due to somebody opt-outs, which we still have to establish numbers, was to bring back the full middle school. That is not possible immediately, but we believe it is possible second semester and bringing back every grade level six, seventh and eighth. How that is possible as it stands right now is the movement of one of the grades to the high school and poding that grade level at the high school. We are looking at all the options to do that. We know we can do that. So what I'm saying is that the middle school would return in fall at the end of January, provided there were no, obviously outbreaks, which we are, you know, thinking about daily, provided that, you know, we don't have a catastrophe, God forbid unforeseen illness or outbreak in this building or the middle school. But we are looking, so basically the two things that we are looking at as of right now are Wednesdays, which are going to happen right at the, I think November 13th might be the first day.
16th.
16th, 17th. Yeah, 16th would be the first day, first week of that. Then we would look for the full return of the middle school in January, so second semester. So every kid would be back.
But that would be with moving a grade out of the middle school. Two grades would come back full-time in the middle school and one of those grades would be moved out to the high school.
Correct. And be potted at the high school. So potted is for the communities would be, the kids would not be moving. They would be potted with their classroom for the day and the teachers would rotate similar to the middle school model with, excuse me, the elementary school model with the teachers moving. We believe that can happen. We know it can happen. Then we think it's very prudent to wait through flu season to see how this plays out. We're seeing an uptick in our schools. We just reached the point of Hampton Bay's. We had unfortunately another issue here. We're trying to get through that and when we get through that, we think we'll be good to go. Again, what could happen is everything could change. We could have, you know, social distancing could be off the table. Masks could be off the table. Masks can be on the table. Social distancing could just change. If that happens, this timetable is extremely flexible. But we're really going by the recommendations of our chief medical officer, Harry Hellman. We've been constant.
And Harriet, I think you are part of this meeting. Can you hear me? Harriet?
Adam, I have a question. Why do you pick on the sixth grade rather than the eighth grade?
Well, we don't, sixth grade, the sixth grade in itself may say is very easy numbers-wise and they're a potted group. But we don't, I don't want to set that in stone publicly yet because I mean, we, there are a number of other, I guess, variables that could take us, we might be able to do a different grade. The thinking with the sixth grade piece and getting the sixth grade possibly in a different location would be because they are sixth grade, they are elementary technical ages, the teacher certifications, the lack of movement of kids, the size of the current sixth grade makes it very easy. And the fact that the eighth graders are basically the seniors in their own building and it really, you really want to pull that grade level out and move that to the high school.
And I think there's also coordination between the eighth and seventh grade teachers that they're multi-teacher, multi-grades. So that would be, it would be too hard to move one of those grades up if we go that way.
So just to play the screen.
Right. But I mean, just to say, there's definitely, you know, none of that is, that is said, so we have the time now, I think, to look at it again. What the principals are going to be doing over the next few weeks is we need to iron out the number of remote learners. So those things, those numbers have been trending up. So meaning more kids have been pulling out. That allows, long as there is a commitment for us to be more flexible with what we're able to do within the school. Once we have.
Is that just in the high school or the middle school too? Is the middle school's up that number remaining steady and the high school's increasing?
High school's definitely trending up. Charlie, are the high, are the middle schools trending up or are they stable?
Well, for now, they're stable. And based on the survey results, it seems like, I think the number was 67 or 68% said that they were going to continue with the hybrid program as is. So that means the remainder is up in the air. So I'm not sure. I think people were reluctant to commit this early.
And right now, it's impossible to bring back the middle school full-time in their own building.
It's physically, so let me explain this in the clearest way I can for everybody. So the middle school, while it appears to have small, certain small classes, I'll give you certain, this becomes the issue. So you might have an English class running first period with 13 kids. You might also have a math class running with, let me just, you might have a math class running with 20 kids that period. So with social distancing, we now have to find another location for part of that class in that, in the building. So we can't just leave them there. So that location responds. We have to find a location and have supervision and live stream from that alternate location the kids are at school. So that 13, that's fine. That's all in the class, they're good to go. What happens at the middle school is you have multiple classes, multiple periods that have like 20 kids. So you need multiple locations to have overflow. A lot of locations. It's when you have three grades in there. So if you have three grade levels running with, period one has five classes of over 18 kids, like Charlie said, I think 15 kids in a room. If you have multiple classes running at 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, you then have to find locations to splice those kids off for a live stream. You'd have to rotate them in. When you have the two grades, you open up space in the building. You have that space.
Have the extra classrooms.
Yes. And then the high, and the other pieces would be, with the, same with the seventh, eighth, ninth, 12th, ninth through 12th grade, you're dealing with classes, yes, you have an AP class with 28. Then you have to break that class up. You can't pod our high school because the high schools that are doing the poding or not the poding, they're moving, are maxing their classes at 18. We don't have that. So we have like AP Calc might run at 28, one period 15 and another period. James would have to find locations. And in the high school, it's exponential. You'd have to find multiple locations everywhere to live stream these kids. The social distancing, which Rich just sat on and Wendy was on a conversation with Suffolk Department of Health Commissioner, when he stressed the social distancing component and he almost equated it to be even more important than the masks, not discounting the masks, but more important, that kind of threw everything, pulled it, put us back.
So they're not, they're not going to lift the six-foot mandate at all?
Wendy, maybe you can just touch base with those three non-negotiables.
So masks are non-negotiable. And we have everyone from pre-K up mask. Our kids only take it off for a little bit at lunch, about 20 minutes at lunch, no more than 10 at snack for the younger kids. The social distancing is the other part. And there's really not much leeway. And considering we had our fourth case today, we shouldn't even think about leeway for six feet at this point. And then just the hand washing and sanitizing that we've been doing.
Could you just touch upon, because I don't think Harriet was going to try and in. Harriet, are you able to?
Rich?
Yes.
Harriet sent a note here that she says she's muted and she can't speak.
Okay. So let me take that control then. And she can speak now.
Harriet, I think you're able to speak. So.
So, first question.
Just as one point, in terms of the flu season coming in, could you just address that, please?
So there have been a couple of cases of flu already. And you know what everyone's fear was that, you know, that kids could have both, you know, that they would overlap. So, you know, I think we just have to be very cautious. I think the Wednesday is a no-brainer because we're not really picking up more risk that way. These kids are already in their cohorts. But I think waiting to do the other is a smart judicious plan as well because, you know, we don't know what's going to happen after Thanksgiving too. Everybody, you know, does their thing, is off for five days, six days. And so, you know, I'm hoping that people do the right thing and keep things small. But I'm also ready for what comes my way after Thanksgiving. So I think, you know, from now to Christmas will be really critical as to what we do. So, will you?
Thank you.
So I, so I mean, that's where we are. And again, I want to make it clear to the, you know, obviously the boards and the public, things can change, you know? We're, we're all proceeding very judiciously. But if things change and we're able to end the social distancing, trust me, we will bend it. Right now, you know, we, we can't.
And you know, Governor Cuomo called it whack-a-mole. And that's what I feel like it is now. I think Jack gave you that joke before too because, you know, in New York, you have the mini clusters. But that's, that's what I figured would happen with us. We have one here, we'd have to, you know, put that fire out, then another one would pop up. And that's kind of exactly what's happening. So, you know, but it's just confining that.
Although, one, a comment and a question. Because I do, I don't think, I mean, we've been really fortunate and I think it's not all good luck. I think some of it is good work and good preparation. We haven't actually had any clusters. We've had, we've had no.
No, none.
We've had no school spread, which means what we've done so far has been effective. We have kids who've gotten community spread, who have brought it to the school. And we have been able to stop a cluster from forming in the school, which is fantastic. I mean, I'm really, really.
Yeah. And I forgot to mention the flexi glass too, because every time I talk to the Department of Health, the fact that there's flexi glass, it helps.
Yeah. So here's my question.
And it's on the way to the high school. The high school flexi glass has been ordered. There are 700 units coming and upwards of 2,000 will arrive here, kind of that.
Okay. So here's my question. I, the, all the different pieces of it made sense to me. The one that I just want to talk about for a moment more is the high school and the plans for the high school. So I am intrigued by the plan that James had outlined as a potential to do, to split the pods so that kids could come back on a rotating basis. I think it was, I'll let James address it. I think it was like four days a week with smaller pods. So what I am interested in understanding is how that works with respect to the things that we're acknowledging are the most significant, which is social distancing and masks. So are we, and I want to further clarify and ensure, I mean, I was not aware that sort of part of the backend person means splitting people up and live streaming in a classroom. So I want to understand, I guess, a few things. Number one, if we're able to come back at the high school and do, split the existing cohorts further so that kids can rotate and come back four days a week, we can maintain social distancing, we have the classrooms for that. Two, does that involve live streaming at all or is that all live teachers?
James, you want to explain?
Yeah. So just for context, when I developed that plan, that was before, you know, I had, we consulted Harriet. So that whole plan keys on, it would have to break some level of social distancing. It's, it's impossible to do it and social distance, you know, in the full six feet. So that, you know, that alone kind of, you know, puts it out especially, I mean, I can get into the minutia, you know, of that, especially in the cafeteria, it became really problematic. In terms of the live streaming component of it, there still would be live streaming, you know, with that, the other portion, I mean, essentially, if you broke it up into four pieces, three pieces would be in on any given day, but the fourth piece would be live streaming. So it would still be an important part of it. Plus, in certain rooms where there would be an overflow that would be created, we'd have to create some spaces for that overflow to go, which it's not a perfect science to say the least. But those students could potentially be in the building and live streaming for a period, which in that model is better, you know, that you live stream, you know, in the building for one period as opposed to the whole day, depending on the classes that you go to. So to answer your question, the cohort idea, you know, was probably a little bit too aggressive in the context of social distancing and there would be live streaming that would be involved if we had to do, if we had to go that route.
So is that like the equivalent of like, I know my kids at college have, you know, we're using this term overflow. They have a health class in one room with the teacher, but the kids that can't fit in the room are in the lab room next door watching it live as a class together. So you have two classes of 13 kids in rooms next door to each other. One is in front of the teacher and one is live streaming and then they alternate the next class.
Yes.
That's what you mean?
Yes. Ours possibly, possibly won't be next door, but they will be, you know.
So they might be in different areas of the building.
Yeah. So I mean, Charlie, when Charlie looks at his building and sees the feasibility of where that can be, you know, that's what would transpire.
Now, who is monitoring those students?
That's, so one of the things we talked about today administratively is we do have a lot of support personnel, repurposing support personnel, but we might have to look at, you know, where we are with staffing and what we need to do with staffing.
Because they can't be left unsupervised.
Oh, correct.
But we have. As a name, right? Or teaching.
Correct. We've found a lot of flexibility. TAs, our professionals, that we've been, you know, blessed to have enough of, that there's a level of flexibility that we're, we can. I mean, and if we, if we have to look at, you know, staffing, we're going to look at everything, you know, everything laid all out there. You know, the last thing.
What you're saying is like, the sixth grade moves up here, sixth grade is a small grade. So if the sixth grade did move up here, they wouldn't really need the overflow.
No, they would not have overflow. It would be.
But the seventh and eighth grade, if we move the sixth grade up, seventh and eighth grade would still have some overflow.
No doubt.
Automatically.
No doubt.
Okay. So.
Yes, you would have to, you know.
It's not a matter of bringing all the seventh and eighth graders back after you move the sixth grade out and everybody's in the same classroom doing the same thing.
No, you're going to have overflow. The bigger piece is, you know, when you talk about poding, and this came up when people talked about opening the high school and, you know, reducing class size. Again, the effect of high schools who have done this have hired massive amounts of staff. I mean, upwards of 15 teachers in some cases. The state has given some waivers for probationary teachers to allow high one-year hires. The problem with that is you're hiring 15 teachers. We have trouble recruiting three teachers. We have trouble recruiting three teachers, um, at times, you know. Who's coming out, what are we getting, is that what we wanna put in front of our kids? And then you gotta look at the spacing, you know. This high school is, is, you know, it's, it's full, it's, it's, we're operating, I don't know, James, I, I don't wanna miss, misspeak this. But I think, you know, you, you were operating in around seventy-five percent capacity, which is where you need to, to run a schedule. You need to, to run, I might be, I don't wanna misspeak, but you, like, you can't run a high school at a hundred percent capacity. You couldn't have moved, you'd have room issues. So where, we're running, yes, and it affected the size. We're at nine, I mean, we're at nine sixty-six, I think, uh, students. That's more, I mean, I, that's, I think that was forty, uh, forty increase from last year.
Are those only new enrollees, I'm sure?
I don't know, I don't even, you know, but the eighth grade class was large, yeah. Um, so it's average, average, I'd say. I don't think it was much, I don't think it was close to twenty new enrollees at the high school.
And depending on for next year too, when, when the, the trophy is, is another big eighth grade coming, you know, we're putting a cart in front of a horse. But you may be dealing with a lot of these issues next year too, so, and you could even have more kids.
Yeah. I mean, this logically makes sense. I mean, I, I don't, you know, speaking as a former high school principal, there is nothing that tears at my heart, the fact that the seniors right now are not. Yeah, I, I spoke to a few, I feel I am heartbroken and I know that James is, is, James and Karen, um, you know, you know, to a certain extent, Jill has been looking at ways to do that. Uh, and I know if there's a way, they'll do it.
Well, that is, that is a question, can we bring in, can we give a little bit of clarity to seniors? If, if we can't bring anybody back, can we give clarity to those?
So like, yeah, just for some context of what I, what I was looking at, I literally like tried to chop up every configuration you can think of the school. Looking at, you know, breaking up the cohorts, looking at the cohorts, um, by grade level and seeing what we can bring in. And just about every version ran into the same problem of, at some point, the overage gets too big when I start to bring, you know, full groups back in. Cause you gotta remember, even if I'm bringing in a grade level, well, it's not like they're spread out through everything. They're still locked in these same classes that puts us over, you know, the, the class size and leads to like, you know, a bunch of overages. Plus, you start throwing in the cafeteria, which is kind of like a non-starter, like, every time, I, I just at some point started looking straight to the cafeterias. Because it got so big that, that I knew there was no way, in the best-case scenarios, of us being able to manage that. Especially, you know, it's nice that we have the outside tables, but I mean, it's gonna be cold, we're not gonna have kids outside, obviously in the cold, you know, during lunch. So unfortunately, there, there wasn't a way that I could see to do it without, you know, breaking that social distancing.
So in other words, say we have one teacher that teaches, um, calculus. Um, and there's, you know, thirty kids in that class. You're still, even though you would have more room, you're still having an overflow situation because there's only one teacher, that's the teacher.
So even if you move the high, so let's say you could get thirty in this room, so they move locations, you still have another ten classes you have to.
Right, you can't just shift the teacher who doesn't teach that subject in.
Correct, you know, you got, you know, the only, like, the other piece, and, and this is somewhere where middle, some middle schools have done this. I don't know, I haven't heard of high school, I would never, you know, wonder, I mean, they, you know, my son's school district in the eighth grade, they got rid of sci- uh, math eight and science eight. They accelerated, they put all kids in earth science and they put all the kids in algebra. That way the teachers can move.
Right.
Do you wanna do that in high school? Do you wanna start getting rid of, at, you know, for twelfth grade, eleventh grade options and moving and just leaving a kid in a classroom? And everybody gets pretty much a cookie cutter approach of, like, you get standard classes, you know, what is happening to your elective program? I mean, it's all.
But you have to rebuild it once we go out of this case, you know, so it puts you back a long way.
Right.
Wouldn't work, it's like you're reshuffling the deck while you're in the air, that would, that would just be a nightmare. I don't even know if it would help because those, the kids are in the building, so they have to go someplace. So, you know, even if, you know, we change classes with it, so now I'm putting those kids in a study hall, well, now how big are the study halls gonna get? You know what I mean? So it's, it, it's very.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt, um, Wendy Gearing, could you please come into the office for a moment, please? This is important.
Question, uh, at the end of thirteen weeks, parents and kids can opt to leave for the next thirteen or come back, right?
Well, the thirteen weeks, the John Marshall thirteen weeks, we're ten weeks, so we're.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah.
I said ten weeks.
Yes.
I said this part.
Yes.
What are you anticipating?
I mean, the principals have sent out some surveys, I guess Charlie and James could speak to what they're seeing. They've sent preliminary surveys out about opting back in, um, you know, they could probably best talk about the trend, or trends. But we are gonna have to make a decision soon of, basically over the next few weeks of, what are you doing? You know, we, and the, the length of that is imperative for us.
We're gonna go another thirteen.
And you're, yeah, are you going another, are you going another quarter? Are we gonna allow you to go another quarter of choice? Or are we saying, you know, this is your rest of the year's choice? I mean, these are all discussion points, because at some point, the, the sooner we know the actual numbers.
Long-term plan, you're right.
They go, that's, and I mean, I'm, these, these two principals are being patient, like, if we would just say, this is your choice, your choice. And we, you, the board and, and the superintendent have been super generous with that. Most districts are a semester and a year, so I, I like the free, we have that freedom and I think it's what is special about our community. We try to accommodate everybody in these tough, tough decisions. But the sooner we stabilize those numbers, um, I think Tim wants those numbers stabilized yesterday, then we can.
We could have a deadline.
We didn't yet, we're working on it, yeah.
But do we look at doing the whole year, making it?
It's, it's a discussion.
Is that what's better for kids at the end of the day, is the question?
That's the only way to realistically plan, to, to have a long-term plan.
Yes.
I mean, maybe planning easier, but it's, it's harder.
Correct.
For, for a student or parent to make the decision, right?
Yes, and you don't wanna tie the hands of the two principals. So the two principals have a view of at-risk kids. And the last thing I know James wants to do is let some of the parents and kids of some of our most at-risk kids make that decision. If James wants to be, we need you back in school, we need you here. You know, we need you, you know, so, you know, I think, you know, and I, I, we, we anticipated this, that some of the decisions were made by, you know, some of our older students of wanting to stay home. And we really need those kids in school because they're at risk and, you know, being not here is, is not good and we want them in school.
So is there a scenario, again, I, I, I mean, I'm in the category of parent who, um, would love to see as much in-person school as possible safely? Uh, is there a, so we have a, the elementary school it, it works for. The middle school, there's a potential for doing that. Other than bringing back that rotating Wednesday, is there, is there anything, am I hearing from you, James, that you don't see a scenario? Under which we can safely go come back more days at the high school?
Good question.
Am I muted? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna just be honest, uh, in terms of, there, there really is, well, it all depends what you mean by bring back. So the, the larger scale, everyone back in school five days a week, um, not unless we're breaking social distancing, that's.
That, that, I don't see everyone, I, I'm gonna take everyone back five days a week off the table, I don't see that happening at the high school. But I was so intrigued by some of your thoughts about, you know, rotating so that kids just have more days in school.
Yeah.
And like more than, like at least be here more than they're not here.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's the pickle. Unfortunately, um, there isn't a way of doing that that I could see, uh, social distancing holds us back with that. I mean, there's, there's elements where we can look at kind of on a need basis, cause I mean, and I'll just be very frank. You know, looking at the progress report grades, I have a lot of concerns, you know, in terms of students' performance. And yeah, there is a difference between the students who are physically here and those who are not. Um, so, you know, if you need any more proof that having kids in school i- is better, I mean, there, there it is. But if we're going to bring kids back, it has to be strategic and on a need basis.
Yeah, no, I, I, I hear you and I believe that that makes sense, that, that was not even something that I had thought about before tonight. So this is a very useful conversation to have in that respect. But I just, you know, as, as, as the parent of a, a kid also here, and I hear from other members of the community who I know feel this way. You know, I mean, there's, there's certainly no substitute in person, I know you know that too. I, you know, the, the, and I, I really am grateful for, uh, teachers. And I, I do think that East Hampton, looking at what's happening on the other east-end schools. I think East Hampton probably have one of the, if not the best, remote program on the east end right now because of the way we've done it. But it's still really so far, and, and that's not a reflection on our teachers at all, it's just. It, it, you know, it's just hard, it's just hard to learn this way.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I, I, I agree, listen, we, the, the work that's been done by, you know, the building administration and all the buildings, the teaching staff, support, it's, it's been amazing.
Right.
But when you look at, there's a reason why we all come to work and we work with kids here because we have the kids here.
Right.
The, the worst thing, and you said it, what threw the cog in all of this is that conversation, the social distancing conversation. So once we hear there's a change in that, and that's what I wanna make sure the community knows. If in a month, God willing, in a month, we hear a change to four feet and masks are what we need, we want masks, let's get more kids.
And the science will be changed.
We change, I think we.
I don't think the science is gonna change anything.
Well, what I'm saying is the result.
Yeah, we will, we will be, like, we're not set in stone with this. So if something all of a sudden, you know, it says we can have more kids back or more social distancing, five feet, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna look at.
Or, or like, I'm just trying to figure this out, like you were talking before, I don't know, like, even, even if you have plexiglass.
Yeah.
You know, does the plexiglass change your social distancing, I don't know.
No, it doesn't, it, it helps. Plexiglass, it helps you in your ranking when you, we have to talk about quarantine through the DOH. It helps us with our score if we have to quarantine a class or who is within the, the, the set distance. That's where it helps us, it doesn't, it, we can't, it's, and that was the big discussion before the year started. It was masks and/or social distancing and/or plexiglass, which is, is it and? And it turns out it's and, it's not or.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and, and the other thing, again, I am, I'm not advocating breaking any of those. I'm just making a comment that I wanna make, because I think we're losing so much. Um, you know, that so many big kids are, are together on weekends and are not social distanced, that it's.
That's a fear, that's a fear for what will happen here.
Right. Sorry, you?
Yeah, we, we, we have to go back to the exact for personnel, um, we've gotta discuss it, but now we definitely need to. But like, um, I think one thing that I think we all know sitting here as board members is the work and effort that all of our staff and lots of board has put in this.
Absolutely.
I think, I think parents need to understand and hopefully parents are tuned in tonight, cause I know there's a group of parents that wants to go, you know, more, you know, in person. And if we can, I think the commitment from the district and the administrators is if we can, we will. But we also have to keep in mind, there's guys that, not, they're, they're, there are rules, there are laws. You can't just do what you wanna do, you have to have that separation. And I think once you guys explain this in the way James has explained it, it, it helps even us, I think, understand exactly what you're up against. I think we came in here with one set of thoughts and, or I think leaving them another, but I think our parents and our community need to know that you guys have done everything.
Seems like they're working above and beyond to try to figure out a way to get. They're working on.
But it is.
One thing that's interesting, I haven't said this out, these were not, we're not the only schools, the only schools are trying. We all know it's better to get the kids back here, cause Jackie has advocated for it. But they were stuck, you gotta be saying, you gotta be saying.
And we have to follow rules, we have rules.
We have to follow, they're not negotiable.
And these aren't easy solutions, we have other issues too with busing.
Yeah.
We don't have enough bus drivers to bring everybody back in our buses.
And that was a conversation, because Joe came with facility, we have that, I have a conversation. Anybody wants to be a bus driver, seriously, we're looking desperately, so if anybody's looking for, for a job, listen, apply, cause we need bus drivers as Keith knows.
Right.
You know, you can, you can see it.
And we have the buses, but we don't have enough drivers, so.
And the fact that they have to be distanced now is, changes everything.
Right.
Like, anybody that can drive their kid, please drive them, because there's a waiting list for the buses right now.
We already have a waiting list right now and, you know, I think, I think Wendy, you made the point the other day too, in facilities, that now if we have to have a bus driver or two out on quarantine. We don't have enough drivers for the route that we have. So there are a lot more issues to tackle that, that from the outside it looks easy in the back five days, but you know, you have safety to.
And our staff is working above and beyond to try to figure out how we do it.
And you know, we have three hundred and sixty staff.
Oh, yeah.
Then we also have to.
Three seventy-four.
Three hundred and seventy-four other people that we also have to worry about their safety and their health, so.
And, and they're working, cause listen, this is not easy on them either.
No.
You know, when you know your routine daily, it's, it's a different story than your routine, A, is changing. And B, you have to work harder on this end, and maybe this ends easier, but it's different every day. And, and I, I think in fantasy, I think if, if people in our community understand sort of the commitment, and I think, Adam's not here, but I know Rich will. But then as, as a board, we're just asking that you guys continually explore, and I know the, the story, but I want, I want this question, but I know I want the public to know. You're looking every day.
Every day.
To make it better, and I think that's, that's a no-brainer for myself, but I think the community needs to know that. And I, I hope they're, maybe then James can listen to it. Cause we all, if we could just put the switch and be back to, you know, this time, we actually have wonderful.
I mean, I think that for all of us, I will say, you know, it's a very, um, emotional subject. Because all of us as parents and as community members feel the loss on all levels for our kids. I'm, I'm so sad for my kids.
That's hard.
And for not just my kids, but for everyone's kids, cause like me, you know what, I'm working harder than ever, I have to wear a mask, it stinks. But, you know, my life, you know, it, it's not the same thing as these kids who are just losing out on education and social things.
And these, these are times that they'll never get back, they'll never get these three back, they'll never get their twelve-three back.
Well, that's your senior class, your entire senior class, they will have them and those are things that they will never get back. Very, very, very tough, and so I think that it's really important. I mean, I, I know I've been pushing hard, um, to try and get more time in school, but I respect everything that's said here tonight. So I'd like to see us find some way to at least bring the seniors back, because it is such, such an important milestone. If there's any way to get, you know, more of them back and then you start.
So, this is what I, I would say in this regard, and I mean, I have, if you saw this spreadsheet that I had, you think I'm an insane person. I literally have every scenario, like you can think of, like, set up. And so there's almost not even on my part, any thinking on, on what to do. It's just like, when the rules can change, so I can apply any one of these scenarios, then we're ready to go. I, I think at least on my end, um, because I kinda know what the various scenarios would be, if, depending on what I'm allowed to do. Um, I, I think we almost need to shift gears, and this is tough to say, and I'm glad someone, I heard in the background, you know, mentioned loss. And I've been talking about this all week, that this is a loss, and I think probably one of the, the, the biggest things that we have going against us. Is unfortunately, we're comparing it to what we've known for years, all of us. And I think on some level, we have to accept, here's what it is, and we need to work on making this better, which is a separate piece of work than trying to get back to what was, you know? When the rules change, we can get back to what was, but at least for where I'm at, and I'm having some meetings with our coordinators, speaking with students, is trying to figure out how we can make what we're currently doing in this dynamic, you know, better for, for our students. Cause I mean, it's hard work, but we can do better, you know, it's, and I want every parent to know this, like, we're not settling for what it is. We get it, we just need to, to work on that. Did I get, am I disconnected here?
Yeah, you, you hear you.
It came over my screen, I just wanted to share that, that, you know, it's, it's more, it's more than just going back to what was. It's also figuring out how to make where we're at work, but I think we do have to kind of shift gears a little bit to that. And I get it, as a parent, I'll, I'll just come forward, I sent something to my school district about getting my kid. And so like, I understand that feeling and talking to kids, like, it, it comes through, you know, in terms of what, what's going on and the experience that they have. But I think we have to worry or, or put some focus on, you know, and I can go on about this, you know, just what can we do to make this situation that we're in a little, as best as possible for our students?
Karen, I think you wanted to say something? Nope. Karen?
Sorry, I was muted. I, I just wanted to, um, thank both the Board of Education and the District Administration for the opportunity to be the interim principal at John Marshall. I, I can't believe, I'm gonna say that this is my nineteenth year in the East Hampton Union Free School District. And, um, I'm very much looking forward to reacquainting myself with some of the John Marshall staff that I started my career with in East Hampton. Um, and supporting both the instructional and non-instructional staff and really, um, supporting our student growth and development at the elementary level. So, um, I'm very excited for the opportunity and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you for stepping up, Karen.
Yes, thank you.
And I just, I, I just wanna add that I'm, I'm so happy that we've sort of built an infrastructure within the district, we're as possible to do this all internally. an infrastructure with a best strategy there as possible to do this all internally, because to try and do this in the middle of a COVID crisis externally, it's-
Yeah.
It happens, it happens, yes.
And if you look back, if you look back ten years, you know, it would be very difficult. You know, you have to look at it that way. And you look at everybody sitting at the table, and how people are coming through, and, and, you know, coming from within, which is, is huge. Not always, not always possible, and not always perfect, but it's, it's a, it's a big deal.
Yeah.
Okay. We done with the, I think-
How do you know with your presentation?
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very productive.
Thank you.
Do you guys need me anymore, or did anyone want to direct any questions?
Do you want to talk at all about, do you want to, or if anything, any-
I'm, I'm okay. I think, Wendy, I think we're okay.
You're okay?
Yes. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And I can always pass them along to Harriet. I know she had technical issues tonight, um, so she was sorry not to weigh in, but, um, I can pass anything along to her.
Thank you. We heard her thinking.
Yeah.
Please let her know we value her input very, very much.
Yes.
No, and she's, she's been, um, working insane hours to help us along, so I thank her for that. Yeah.
You should go on.
Thanks.
Thank you, Wendy.
Good night.
Um, yeah, public comment. Matt, can we hack anybody on the line? You got for public comment?
We do not. And just for the record, um, I did test it a second time, and the line is working with the phone number, um, on the bottom of the screen. So, it's working, but you have no callers right now. Thank you.
Can someone just let me know?
No, you can't.
Do they consent agenda? Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number one, the superintendent's report recommendations. Number one, recommend the board approve the following resolution. Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, Karen Punis, is appointed to the position of interim principal at the John Marshall Elementary School effective immediately, and throughout the remainder of the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, or until permit appointment to such position is made, whichever occurs first, at the annual salary of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars pro rata. And be a further resolved that Karen Punis granted a leave of absence for a position of assistant principal in East Hampton High School for a period commencing immediately and through the remainder of the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, or until the permit appointment to the position of principal of John Marshall Elementary School is made, whichever occurs first. And be a further resolved that Karen Punis probation period as assistant principal of East Hampton High School, which currently ends June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, is extended for the period commencing immediately, and, uh, through the remainder of the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, or by a shorter period of time, if the position of principal of John Marshall Elementary School is filled prior to the end of the school year. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Karen, congratulations, and thank you again.
Congratulations.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Excuse me, school board, I need to interrupt. You have two callers now on the line.
Okay. We wanted to take our two callers. I, I don't know if they knew that this was coming, so I, I wanted to give them, I do want to give them an opportunity. Are we okay with that?
Yes. I think we should just finish.
Okay, it's pretty short, so we can finish.
Yeah, I don't want to go back and forth.
That's fine. All right. So just, Matt, we'll get to them in a minute. We'll just get through the rest of this.
Okay.
Number two, recommend the board approve the following, uh, resolution, resolve that the board accepts a letter of resignation from Jill Collins in the position of D S students, and nine twelve students' days coordinator effective immediately. And be a further resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, Jill Collins is appointed to the position of Income High School Assistant Principal, commencing immediately, and through the remainder of the twenty, twenty, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one school year, at the annual salary of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars pro rata. And be a further resolved that Jill Collins is granted a leave of absence from her position of secondary social studies teacher, uh, for a period commencing, uh, time of vacancy with her forming to the position of Income High School Assistant Principal throughout the remainder of the twenty twen- twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second. Uh, any discussion?
No.
Second, congratulations. Jill, again, thank you. Yes, thank you, Jill.
Great job, Jill.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three, we're going to table, right? Do we need a motion for table? Okay, we're at table. Number three. Um, number four, recommend the board approve the following-
JP, pardon me, excuse me, but yes, you need to make a motion to table that resolution.
Listen to Rich, okay.
I made the motion.
All right.
Sandy, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sorry about that. Number four, recommend that the board approve the following, uh, resolution, resolve that Joseph Malacia is upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, appointed to a secondary English position as a leave replacement commencing October twenty-first, two thousand twenty, and due two thousand, I'm sorry, in two, December eighteenth, two thousand twenty, at the per diem rate based on step one, at two hundred and eighty dollars and twenty cents per day. Have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second? Leave replacement, and any discussion?
Just the leave person, person up.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five, recommend the board approve the following plans for two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, beginning with nine pre- twelve social studies program coordinator, uh, Devin Parks, at the annual stipend of ten thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars pro rata, and down to driver's education program, Jason Renew, theory class teacher, at the hourly professional rate of seventy-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
My son was doing his driver's ed if he kicked the table off.
It's a lot safer. So, number six, recommend the board approve the consultant agreement between East Hampton and New York Street School District and Ann Orwark M T, uh, B C for the purposes of providing student music therapy services at the hourly rate of one hundred dollars per half hour for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in said agreement. Have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Now, just a typical contract for, for classified students.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number seven-
Excuse me, JP, I need to interrupt one more time. I'm sorry. You now have four callers on the line.
Number seven, recommend the board approve the consultant agreement between the East Hampton and New York Street School District and Dawn Russo, um, for the purposes of providing A D A therapy and parent training at the hourly rate of one hundred dollars per hour for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in said agreement. Have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, just what is that? What's, what's A D A training and parent therapy?
Uh, A D A, a specific-
Hi.
Cindy?
Hi, hi. It's, um, applied behavioral analysis. It's, uh, for students who have significant disabilities who need home services to help their parents, uh, with parent training counseling.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number eight and nine, we're also going to table this evening. Um, have a motion for, for number eight to recommend-
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, this is also for the board, the open board seat. Have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the, the board, well, everybody understands what the board's goal is. Uh, we will, uh, likely appoint a new board member at our next regular meeting. We just thought it was, we just want to have a further discussion about it here.
And just because, just for the public, we, we just sat with the three candidates.
Correct.
So we wanted to have further deliberations before we talked it.
Yes.
And a little business.
Yeah, today's a, 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 so number ten, recommend the board approve the following budget transfers. Um, there's two. Have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
This is all, I'm looking, there's a note here that says it's for additional Chromebooks.
Yes.
So this is what we talked about the last meeting, where we were short, and somebody said, go ahead and get them, and we are getting them.
We are currently repurposing a number of Chromebooks that exist in the district, so we save money that way by having our tech staff repurpose them. Uh, they found them. Uh, then we have a bunch, uh, close to three hundred on order, on back order. It's a struggle.
I want to ask another question. The, the seniors from last year, right, my recollection is that, do we, we, do we, we don't, we don't collect them from the seniors?
We did not get last year's from, there's no way. Do you recall, like, when we did-
We had a bunch of them, I mean, and that's where the repurposing went.
Oh, we did.
Most, I'm really, and I don't, the tech, we're not coming into that, but a lot of them, that's repurposing.
You know, but that's my question. My recollection, because I, I thought it was odd, but then it's like my father, so we don't, my recollection was that we didn't get them back after that fourth year, it's having it. And my question is whether or not, like, parents up in the home, whether that, like, you know-
They can offer them back.
Like, put out something maybe to see and tell anybody.
Yeah, to offer back Chromebooks that are not there.
My, my son, by the end of four years, like, there's not even any-
Yeah, I know. My son's a great young, his junior year, so that's a-
We can put that out there.
There's some that might-
There might be some that are, some slightly used.
Yeah.
I, I guess I got word.
I think that's where most of the comments are.
Yeah.
And they're, they're slow.
Okay. So, I just wanted, we're good with the, uh, the superintendent's report. Uh, Matt, I just want to go, can you go to our first caller, Matt?
Uh, but can I get a, can I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you wrap it up.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping me on track. All right. Um, go ahead, Matt. Can you introduce our caller?
Okay, then, uh, give me one second, please.
Hi, guys. This is, uh, Nick Canazzo from East Hampton Middle School. Uh, first and foremost, let me thank you guys for your work on the school board. I know that it's not easy, uh, so do understand that we appreciate all the stuff that you guys do and all the work that you do put in. Uh, to everyone who it was, uh, approved today, congratulations. I have a few questions, and I just want to make sure I understand completely what the plan is moving forward for re, you know, for reopening. Uh, my understanding is that November sixteenth, we will alternate Wednesdays between Cohort A and Cohort B from that point forward, with ideally coming back to the middle school full-time in January, and that involves moving the sixth grade up to the high school. Am I correct there?
No, yeah, but we, Nick, we had it formally, the sixth grade makes logical sense for us because of the potting and the ability to rotate the teachers. Uh, the teachers also know numbers. We haven't made that final decision, so, you know, kind of, it's still fluid.
But we have made a final decision on the white-
Absolutely. The Wednesdays are a hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah, at most schools. Everyone's in agreement with that, right?
Yes.
Okay. So the Wednesdays are a hundred percent, that on November sixteenth, regardless, we're going back, we'll have Wednesdays alternating. My question, and my, kind of my comment is, it was, it was mentioned multiple times that you surveyed the parents, and you asked the parents about their feedback, and I appreciate their feedback, but at what point did you take the consideration of the teachers who are doing the job into account, or actually ask for our feedback? Secondly, Mrs. Lowey, you commended us, the staff on our work, and that, and that work was only accomplished by, uh, having the ability on Wednesdays prepare and implement the curriculums, and to provide support at that time for some of our students who are fully remote, who suffer from, you know, weak Wi-Fi signals, multiple technological issues. So my question, or really my statement is, is, is going back on Wednesday, although it does provide one extra day every two weeks to students in the building, is it really going to be the best educational decision, considering maybe the teachers won't be able to implement the lessons that they have been, that have been commended by the board itself, uh, not given the time to prepare?
Nick, are you calling as a, as an employee, or are you calling as a community member? What are you calling as?
I'm calling a little bit of both.
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, I think if you have-
I have a question.
I mean, you should take it up with your union, uh, if it's, if it's a work-related issue. Um, that would be my recommendation. Uh, as far as you're, you're calling it as an East Hampton, um, district resident, you can just let us know what you're looking for.
I guess, I guess my question is, was the staff, was the staff surveyed like the parents were?
Okay. I, I would, I would say to, uh, refer your question to your principal. That's how I see it. I don't know, am I wrong on this?
Okay.
Yep. That's what, you know, because I'm, for me, to answer the question, I'm not sure that that's something that we would do.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
All right. Um, Matt, can you go to the second caller?
Yep, I'm coming right on it right now. Give me one second, please.
Thanks.
Caller, you are live.
Hi, this is Erin Tinsel. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm the parent of a seventh and eighth grader at the middle school. And first, I just want to begin by thanking the administration and the board for all of their perseverance and thoughtfulness that you've put into developing this, this plan, the plan that is currently in place, and the new plan to get our children back to school. Um, I know this is all very crazy, and that none of you could have anticipated this, and you're dealing with a lot of crazy issues while holding these positions. Um, not only that, but the teachers, I can't even imagine what they're going through. I'd like to send out a huge thank you to all of them, because they've literally had to change the way that they teach on a minute's notice, and I'm truly grateful for all the teachers who are literally working in an environment that they weren't even trained to do. So, that's first that I'd like to say. Um, I'd also like to just start off, because oddly enough, we've been sitting here watching the board meeting, and some friends were texting, and the moms that I'm sitting with watching the meeting, were having trouble understanding you at times, and someone was asking, who's talking now? And at other times, someone's volume was unmuted. And oddly enough, it really brought to light what our kids are dealing with on a daily basis. So, it's, I mean, even more like glaringly obvious how hard remote learning is for these kids. So we appreciate that you're making every effort to get them back into school, because I think that's truly where they belong. Obviously, I think we all agree on that. Um, so my question would be then, it sounds like everything is moving forward. The kids will be hopefully going back to school in January, five days a week at the middle school. What I'm having trouble understanding is the rules for the social distancing, because if it's the six feet, the plexiglass, all of these things are, are in place, then I don't understand why we still need the six feet. Um, we've looked at other school districts. In Suffolk County, there are several school districts that are open K through twelve, or K through eight, where they've made efforts, you know, to get middle schoolers back, because they are younger, and they're not, they don't seem to have those rules in place. They've solved that problem by giving individual students plexiglass, so that they can walk around the school during the day. Middle schoolers in Three Village walk around with their own personal plexiglass, and bring it into the classroom, and this way they don't have to worry about the six feet. So, are those rules that we as a district are instituting, or are these mandates? That would be my first question. And could we solve that with plexiglass? And then, second, there was an article recently in the Harvard Gazette, and the, a professor from Harvard had explained that HEPA filters could also be helpful if you put those in each classroom. I was wondering if that's something we could explore and look into to also get kids back into school five days.
Erin, just so you know, we do have the HEPA filters. I might trip them all fully. I know we ordered them, and I might trip them fully installed. I'm not, I don't remember.
Middle schools just about done. Middle schools just about done.
Yeah, but we, we did.
Probably tomorrow, I think.
Yeah, because again, even if you can buy them or afford to buy them, getting them is another story, but, and then installing them, which we've done, um, so that is something. But the way I understand, I think Adam said it earlier, it wasn't Plexiglas four, six feet, it's not an and/or, it's a and. So you have the six feet and the Plexiglas, and we're all learning along with you folks as parents, because we learned a lot, I think, tonight at this meeting, which was great to sky. Um, but I don't know, it's not a rule that's an East Hampton rule, it's a New York State education law.
And, and, and actually comes from the Suffolk County Department of Health.
Yeah.
Uh, Dr. Pigno, uh, is the chief, uh, medical officer from that office, and he actually emphasized in the last webinar that we attended that he feels the six feet distance is even more important than wearing masks. He said, he said we had to err on the side, and he says, I'm not choosing, it's not a and or, it's a, it's an and, we need both. Um, he really feels very strongly about that. Um, and, um, our medical, we're, we're getting that also from our medical professionals, uh, everyone has, uh, clueless into that, the importance of that piece.
And from the CDC on now.
The bottom line with that is, is that this is such as I, my opening statement, the well-being of every one of our students is utmost in making our decisions. Quite frankly, as superintendent, I could never live with myself if I knew that we kind of broke the six foot foot rule and put one of our kids in peril. And that's non-negotiable as far as I'm concerned. It's not something that's coming from the Board of Ed, it's not coming from the administration, it's coming from belt, bed practices via the Department of Health, and it is very confusing because we get messages from the New York State Department of Health sometimes, we get it from the CDC, we get it from the Suffolk County Department of Health, but bottom line is, we are adhering to that six foot rule until we hear differently.
And just, just to add one bit.
As a parent, the parent's confusing, the confusing part, I guess, is when we look around and we see what the other school districts are doing. For example, my daughter's in eighth grade, and at the end of the year she'll be taking in two regents at the end of the year, and she asked me in the beginning of the school year, you know, how am I going to compete with all of her friends on her travel lacrosse team that happen to live up island? They're all going to school five days a week, and she's like, how am I going to get as good of a grade as them? And I think that's a real, that's a real question because if they're in five days a week and we're not, then there's no way she can compete unless I make up for it outside of school, I would think. And so when we say that we see, or when we see these other school districts, getting the kids back right now, I don't know how all of these other school districts are accounting for the six feet of distance, that's why it's confusing, and unfortunately, I guess it would be better if everybody had sort of the same rules, but. That's my, my question.
Following the rules.
Yeah, and then they have bigger.
They might have a bigger school.
I can just add, because I, I happen to know one of the people who works at one of the districts who's been cited as, you know, having the schools, you know, come full back, just because they're full back, they're social distancing, you know, the, every school has a different layout and a physical plan that has to be considered when, when doing this. Uh, they have the capability of doing that, unfortunately, you know, we don't, so it's not that there is a different set of rules per se, but there's a different, sometimes physical features of the building that they're working with.
I, I just want to add one, one thing also, move my mouth, we're all sitting in this room caller with our, with our masks on, so that's why you probably can't hear us that well, when we're talking, but, um, I, I said earlier.
It's actually because there's a delay.
Okay, yeah, um, okay, but one of the things I think, and look, I, I've been a strong proponent of trying to come back to school, and I'm trying to push it every time I have the opportunity to, but I think on the flip side of that, one of the things that I said earlier is while we have had cases in this district, we have had no clusters in this district, we had no spread to other kids or faculty in the district. They have just been kids who've come to school with COVID from the community, likely from their parents or from a playgroup or whatever else, and they've come to school and they have not given it to any other kids got, you know, thank God so far, or any teachers or staff so far. So whatever we are doing so far is working. Um, and I think that that is something that, look, it, it stinks, it stinks, this is not the kind of education any of us want for our kids, but I would say that, you know, I, I think that, you know, colleges and schools and everyone else, I mean, they're not even looking at tests this year. Um, it, it's, it's a whole different world that we'll treat, you know, this is, this is our, is our life. Right.
I understand that, but I don't want to take up any more of your time, and I appreciate everyone's hard work in trying to get the kids back to school five days, hearing that they may be back in January at the middle schools is great news, and we really appreciate that. I'm going to let the next caller speak, so thank you, everyone, good night.
Thank you. And Matt, you're on.
Give me just a second, I'm waiting for, I'm just waiting for, uh, the hang up and... Okay, you're on.
Hello?
You there?
Yeah. Hi, it's Charlotte Sasso, and I have Dante in eleventh grade. Um, my question is, are we able to use the old charter school building for any classes? Would that be any help in getting more kids back to school?
We have two million dollars, you can do that. Yeah, no, sorry, not to be short, but it's in a different school district, it doesn't meet New York State education requirement, it's not owned by us, I don't even know what state it's in at this point, so, um, unfortunately, no. And then it becomes a staffing issue on top, yeah. Yeah.
Well, to follow up on that, if, if you're bringing the sixth grade, and maybe just because of the hearing, uh, difficulty with some of the comments, if you're bringing the sixth grade up to the high school, wh- why isn't that space being used to bring more high schoolers back for more time?
Well, I'm not sure where you started the conversation, Charlotte, um, but if you listen to what the, the principal of the high school, the issue is, uh, we haven't made a decision on bringing the sixth grade up, it's, it's been talked about, and I think with current, the way the current situation is, it's a possibility, barring changes, but I think also when you listen to what, um, Principal Crenshaw was saying, is that some of the classes at the high school might have twenty-eight years of them. So you, it's just not the same, they're sort of, it's sort of comparing apples and oranges, and I, I understand the frustration, but sitting here for two hours tonight listening to all of it, um, and sort of, sort of shed some light, and I, and I apologize that this venue is not the best for you to hear us and see us, and we feel the same way, um, but at the same time, you know, we're, we're limited, and, and, you know, it becomes staffing issues, there become, uh, transportation issues along with everything else, but those rooms are not, not being used right now, they're not, they wouldn't be used the same. And if you're at seventy-five percent and you bring one grade level in, it's not going to necessarily bring you to a hundred percent, but if you try to bring the rest of the high school in, it's a different story, it's just, it's just very complicated. Yeah, it's just very complicated and important. We all, listen, I think everybody sitting here, everyone would like to say, full speed, bring everybody back, if it's safe, but just not.
No, I, I understand, I'm just bringing up some of, you know, the concerns and the questions, I don't know, excuse, you know, excuse, I'm, I'm not bringing it up in a, in a fresh way, I'm just asking.
If they get that way, don't worry, they're not taking it, no, please.
Every, everyone's input and questions is really very, very valuable, and your question is, is very valuable for us. I think James explained it to us earlier, the way the configuration worked, you know, we asked that same question, because I, I don't think anyone here intends to like sacrifice the high school from the middle school, you know, as, I think it just doesn't, it just doesn't work, is what James, James, can you just explain that, just address the question directly?
Yeah, I mean, it's basically, we were to go to.
That was the rationale, I understand that it's a logistical problem. Um, my other question is, I know that, um, in the survey, a lot of parents expressed concern about the kids' screen time and as that relates to homework, and I know that, uh, Principal Crenshaw even addressed the students, which they greatly appreciated of him acknowledging that fact, and asking the teachers to really keep an eye on what was happening with extra work that needed more computer time, and I was wondering if, you know, he had any further comment on that and how you're following up with the teachers to make sure that that suggestion is adhered to.
That, that's a great question, and, you know, from my perspective, I think that's the most relevant question, because from my view, in terms of bringing everyone back, it's almost like that door has been blocked off, but I do think there is, um, a fruitful door in terms of, you know, what's, how do we make this best? Um, that was, the survey that I sent out to the students was very enlightening, I've spent the last couple of days, I'm probably annoying some of the kids, just kind of talking with them, finding out, you know, their perspective on things, which is, I have to tell you, our, our kids are great and they're, they're very insightful. Um, matter of fact, tomorrow I'm going to be meeting with the coordinators, I used my last faculty meeting to kind of talk with the teachers about reimagining what this looks like in a way, you know, considering some of the things that students have brought up, you know, in terms of screen time and, and things like that, the amount of homework, so we're going to be doing some changes. Um, the, the high school is like a battleship, it doesn't turn on a dime, sometimes it does take a little time, um, to get everyone on the same page to turn that, but we're, we're definitely looking at how to make this, um, more manageable, you know? Most of the kids who I spoke to when I was talking in the cafeteria today, they, they did talk about how the screen time almost to a person wa- was too much, and we, I talked with a couple of them to kind of get some ideas, and we've been talking with teachers, but we're going to be formalizing things, you know, the next couple of weeks, you know, to make this a little bit better. One of the other things was homework, you know, that someone talked about, it wasn't as universal as screen time was, um, but the amount of homework, how long it takes them to do homework, things like that, so we're going to be working on some of those things, it's not going to be the same answer for every course, math is different from English, which is different from art, um, but we're all collectively working together, the teachers are doing a phenomenal job, being very creative, um, you know, to figure out how to do this, because I, I do feel for the teachers, this is a new, and someone said it before, this is a new way of teaching, and right now the airplane's off the ground and they're learning how to fly it and also rebuild it while, you know, it's in the air, so it's, uh, you know, kudos. We are working, and I do want the community to know that we're, this isn't something where we're staying stagnant with, we, we understand the concerns, and we're working very hard to make it, you know, better for, for everybody involved.
And then just one last point, if, um, the kids are coming back for after-school sports practices, is there any motion towards some of the clubs being live instead of virtual?
Um, I'm not so much focused in on clubs right now, I'm more keying in, uh, to extra help, um, which is something that, um, you know, kind of in the reimagining that, I'm working on the next couple of days to see about doing that, that's more where my focus is more so than clubs. Um, I, I think kind of what put a little fire into me was seeing, you know, some of the progress report grades, they weren't exactly where we would like them to be, so I'm really trying to focus in on the academic experience. Clubs we can kind of layer in, you know, as time goes by, but my focus right now is on the academic component for our students.
And are you having a principal's practice tomorrow, or when is the next one?
Um, I'll post something, I honestly wanted to be able to give you some news when I speak with the parents, you know, this board meeting, and, uh, also, I'm meeting with my coordinators tomorrow, will give me a little bit more, um, a little bit more bite to give you guys, so stay posted, I'll, I'll have another parent meeting soon.
Well, thank you so much, thank you to all of you for all your hard work.
Matt, do you have anybody else?
Yes, give me one second, please, and I'll take it.
I'm sorry, couldn't understand.
Okay, caller, you're live.
Good evening, this is Rachel Cooper, and, um, I'm a concerned parent of two boys, I have a twelve-year-old seventh grader and a fourteen-year-old freshman. I wanted to thank you all for all of the time and money that you've invested in implementing phase one of our reopening plan, as was said tonight, um, the fact that we provided triple protection to our children has been extremely effective, and we're grateful for that. And I also want to thank our teachers for, um, really, um, working to improve the Google classroom experience for our students, but as we know, um, you know, I think we've gotten to the point where we know we can deliver, um, remoting to those families that remain, you know, that really want to be at home, but, um, that really it is not the ideal, and, you know, hopefully it's just something we use as a temporary school closing measure as we move into the next phase of the school reopening plan. Um, as has been mentioned tonight by many of you all, you know, I'm very deeply concerned about the academic, social, and emotional well-being of our students, and we do, um, have concerns about this rapidly growing achievement gap, and a lot of our students may never recover from that. You know, just looking ahead to the timeline, we will have had three full quarters in a remote environment with the best case scenario of reopening in January. Um, you know, and when I just look at the numbers on Long Island, we've had five months of very, very low case numbers, and even locally, we've really, um, been able to manage what we've seen so far in the school, so, you know, as I said, I think everything we've heard tonight is encouraging. Um, so my question, and I'm going to follow up on what, um, Charlotte was talking about, um, you know, the, you know, everything that I've heard so far is that our issues really revolve around space, and that we, um, the non-negotiable is the six feet distancing between students. Um, so the Sagaplanic School actually leased the space at Most Holy Trinity, and I know Charlotte brought up the CDCH building. Um, given the fact that we're not going to have widespread implementation and adoption and acceptance, um, of a vaccine for a long time, um, would we consider either looking at leasing space or portable classrooms or doing outdoor learning as we even move into the spring? Um, a lot of schools move to an outdoor format, I know we had many parents that had asked those questions prior to the school opening, so I'm just wondering if that's anything that's being considered.
I don't know, let's take a question, but the, the, it's very difficult on a, um, on a property level, like the CDC, the, uh, CDC school, is CDCH is not in our district, number ones, um, so it's not something that would be available to us unless it's some sort of a, a waiver for, but then it, it creates other issues which are staff and transportation, and is that building up to, it's not, that, that's not a public school, it, it was never, it was a charter school, it has different regulations than we do, so, and, you know, you know about Sagaplanic School, I mean, I, I understand and appreciate that, but that's, you know, there's, I don't know how many schools, how many students they have total now, or, uh, but yeah, so I mean, you know, it's a different, you know, this is, is very, I think that's something they could do a little easier than certainly we can if we're talking about moving two hundred students or five hundred students or whatever the number is, I think that it's going to be very difficult, and, and, you know, Rich, take any direct questions, I, I don't know what more.
The outdoor space, I mean, you know.
We've done some.
Matt, the elementary school is using it successfully, Charlie's got some things going on, obviously with the weather changing, you know, when we pursue bigger outdoor spaces like with bigger tents, we then, then have to require, uh, SED approval, and there's fire codes involved, so that's why it decides that it tends actually that exists at the, the elementary, I don't think that's something that's out of, you know, our realm to explore, like, I, I think as the weather gets warm again, I, I don't think it's something we, we shouldn't explore, we should definitely do it, they are very, you know, knowing what I know about the graduation experience here and the tent, they are very expensive, but it's definitely something to look at, I have no problem continuing to pursue that as a viable option, um, you know, but if we're buying multiple, as soon as you go over twenty by twenty, you then need SED approval, there's certain size you need, there's electricity, heating, it's a whole different ballgame, so, um, you know, but I have no problem pursuing that and investigating that, you know, it's definitely something that's doable.
Did you have any other questions?
Thank you, I appreciate that, I think. Um, there is one more question, um, I'm just going to pass the mic to Kristen Corwin because she wasn't able to get in on the call-in line.
Hi there, this, my name is Kristen Corwin, and I have a ninth grade son and twins and seventh grade. Um, I am, I'm deeply concerned about the, uh, Principal Crenshaw's remarks about, um, certain students' grades, um, and I'm, I'm very concerned about, have you, um, seen any attrition rate for the high school kids? Um, the community, you know, is going to suffer from high school dropouts, and, um, you know, I, I think it's extremely important that we get these kids back in school, and I know, you know, we have space issues and everything, but, um, as we mentioned, we have a, a very long list of other school districts that are able to get their kids back in, um, and, uh, I guess that was it.
Well, how many, how many districts are you talking about that, that are full? Yeah, what, how many districts are?
Okay, so, I, I do have a list here, and in, in the middle school, you know, our neighboring communities, Montauk State Harbor, West Hampton, Shelter Island, West Islip are all full-time, and, um, others in Suffolk County, high schools, we have Three Village, Shoreham, Waiting River, Hop Dog, Huntington, and, uh, soon Longwood, Port Washington, Smithtown will all be five days in person. Um, some large districts in Nassau County include Bass Page, Belmore Merrick, Massapequa, East Williston, Hewlett, Carl Place, Sayosset, and Island Trees. Um, again, it's, you know, how are our children going to be able to compete on regents exams and state testing with all these districts where their kids are full-time in person?
Well, our middle school will be at this rate in January, that's what, that's what we're hoping, what we're hoping for, and, you know, I think we're looking at that as a, um, practical out sort of thing, we're not going to go full-fledged with this, I don't think anybody wants to start full blood, full lab and then have to go, I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to do that, so.
What happens if we take away the six foot, if other schools are taking away the six foot and ignoring the guidance from every single health professional, would we be as successful at containing this as we have been?
Yeah, I, I'm not willing to do that.
And I'm not sure they're taking away the six feet, I mean, the bigger school districts are, their buildings bigger, do they have more buildings?
Yeah.
There's a whole lot of different circumstances.
They should call each of those school districts and ask them, do they have enough room that they are maintaining six-foot apart distance?
I bet they are.
But they might be there.
Yeah, I mean, is it, is it worth considering communicating with the other school districts and seeing what's working and what's not working, and?
The, uh, I suppose.
Any kind of.
From all this, from a, a bunch of high schools. The, uh, I propose, from all this, from, uh, a bunch of high schools in Suffolk County, are the challenges that they're experiencing now. Uh, the Three Village district that was born up before is max class size is 18, so they're not exceeding 18 in their classes, can't conceivably do that here. Um, obviously their population's significantly different, we're way more diverse, uh, so that's something. Um, James, I don't know if you heard anything from your listserv on stuff on...
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll, a couple of things. Well, I'm actually texting someone from, from Long, I know that they're not going full back, I, I remember that was one of the districts that came up. This conversation just with amongst the principals has been an ongoing thing where we're literally all asking each other the same question. Hey, what do you, are you opening up? How are you trying to figure out how to get around, you know, the six feet, you know, what have you done? And then response back, everyone's saying the same thing back, it's, no, it's the six feet, it's a six feet. I mean, I could show you threads, you know, from principals where we're all having that same experience. I do think too that, just from my experience, when I hear people say certain districts, sometimes people will confuse an entire district coming back as opposed to an elementary, you know, coming back, so sometimes the information out there isn't always exactly the way, you know, it's perceived to be, so what, what I can say with 100% certainty is that we are doing the best that we can. I also feel very strongly that this was, we're in the middle of the first quarter, and this was for me, and I said this to the teachers, this was our rough draft, you know, doing something brand new, that we're going to work hard, and where we're going to be at in this model is going to be 10 times better, you know, as we progress through the school year, you know, with this, which I know is frustrating as a parent, it's frustrating for me, you know, as, as a parent and as an administrator. Uh, and yeah, the, the grades are can be a source of frustration, but I think it's important to, as much as we're talking about trying to figure out how to get back, it's also trying to figure out how to make it better, because even if we talk about getting back, we're talking, you know, we're, we're talking in November, or excuse me, in, uh, January for, for the middle school. From my perspective, I can't wait that long to improve the program. These are things that we need to work on now, more feedback we get in those regards, I think really helps us, you know, go forward. But I do, I do understand the frustration, i- it's real, I want to validate that, but please know that we're doing the best that we can to, to make this as, as good as possible, and we are going to improve.
One principal.
Okay, I wanted to say thank you to everybody across the board, the school board, you know, all the administrators, I, I meant to say that, and all the teachers, um, who have done a tremendous amount of work, and we are very grateful for that. Um, you know, it's just, uh, seeing your cross children at home crying in tears, um, stressed out is, uh, you know, obviously very concerning, and, you know, that's kind of, uh, the impetus of, um, my whole calling in, so.
Thank, no, thank you for calling.
Thank you for your time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for calling. Okay, and Matt, is that a week, so far?
We got, we got one more caller, JP.
Okay, go ahead.
And you're live with the school board.
Yeah, hi, am I on?
Yes.
Please just take your...
Hi, this is, uh... Uh, I'm sorry, I caught some feedback there. This is, uh, Russell Morgan calling, elementary school assistant principal, I just wanted to make a statement regarding, uh, the outgoing, uh, elementary school principal Doyle. Um, and it's a written statement. So, um, on October 6th, the Board of Education accepted the resignation of our beloved elementary school principal, Mrs. Doyle, after seven years of self-assessment to the East Hampton and John Marshall community, as you all know. Um, Ms. Doyle has been open about her desire to take on a new role in district leadership, particularly in her communication to current district leadership. Um, our loss has become South Country's gain, a missed opportunity indeed. Uh, Ms. Doyle is well-known for her successful big-ticket programs. You may know about our wellness initiative, uh, focusing on the importance of healthy choices and healthy lives, and there was the opening of our pre-K program, providing unmatched teaching and learning for our youngest and likely saving both jobs and money for the district. And of course, uh, dual language, as you all know, providing students with an opportunity to be bilingual at a very young age, along with countless research-based academic benefits and life advantages. While these programs continue to have a massive positive impact on our children, perhaps Ms. Doyle's most impactful accomplishments are somewhat between the lines and unfortunately less known. Uh, first, there's bringing words to life or implicit and explicit vocabulary instructions. Doyle led this effort and personally facilitated the associated professional development, something many principals either choose not to do or don't have, uh, professional expertise to accomplish. With her instructional expertise and overwhelming content and curriculum knowledge, Ms. Doyle utilized platforms not limited to lab sites, modeling, lesson commentary, and observation feedback, enhancing the instructional capacity of our great teachers every single day. Um, this is a necessity for an instructional leader. Um, there's more. Many, uh, it's not most JMMES students are reading every single night. Ms. Doyle understands the research. More independent reading equals enhanced literacy and academic progress. Take 20 minutes to any of our students and see what their reply is. Um, not forget science, uh, with the support of the board, uh, Ms. Doyle brought in FAS, our hands-on science curriculum, our now-famous invention convention, and added a second science teacher, total game changer. Ms. Doyle spearheaded significant upgrades into the way we assess our students. She brought in the Star Renaissance platform, massively integrating FMP assessments, which has been crucial in planning, intervention, and understanding student progress. Uh, now math, we brought in quality curriculum with math in focus and number talks, there's no doubt about it. Our math program continues to outperform in New York State every year. Also on her radar was social-emotional learning, a crucial aspect of our mission. Um, you may have heard of Second Step, TCI, or habit vocabulary, um, Five Habits, which have been ubiquitously integrated into our culture and on the walls of our school, actually. Students are thriving and happy, discipline referrals are nearly obsolete. Ms. Doyle understands that there's a reason for every behavior and teaching moment that ensues. Ms. Doyle has highlighted the importance of attendance to our families and used research to bring retention rates to nearly zero. Um, this is something that, you know, everybody knows about, but I think it's worth mentioning. Um, Ms. Doyle has led an absolutely remarkable effort to open JMMES for in-person learning for five days a week, uh, while also having a remote learning option for families that are more apprehensive. Um, among skepticism, she kept pre-K open all the while, crucial for our youngest, as you know, and crucial for all, as I'm hearing a lot of on this phone call. Um, some said, you know, it wasn't possible, but there was no obstacle too large for her. Kids are out of homes and socializing, engaging with friends, many for the first time in months. Parents returning to work, lives are slowly returning to normalcy, at least, uh, at John Marshall. Our students need the in-person option every day. Um, we need to do everything in our power to keep this platform going. Ms. Doyle focuses on collaborative leadership, continuously involving department coordinators, lead teachers, parents, staff, and students into school-wide decision-making. She always says, the best idea wins. For Ms. Doyle, being a principal isn't a popularity contest, um, it isn't a political accomplishment. For her, it's about putting her head on the pillow at night, knowing she did what was right for children. That phrase was not cliche until Ms. Doyle arrived on scene. As you know, district leadership has been changing over, uh, the past few years and will continue to change in the near future. Be a worthwhile exercise to reflect on how such an obvious opportunity for the betterment of our district may have been compromised. Uh, with a thorough vetting process, Ms. Doyle, diverse hiring committees, district leadership, and Board of Vet, uh, hired terrific, fantastic teachers at the elementary school over recent years. Some more process for district leadership and building admin is worth consideration. Like to thank Ms. Doyle for her leadership, for her priceless contributions to the JMMES community, and for her personal mentorship and friendship. The grit, strength of character, and, uh, you know, a make-things-happen attitude, Ms. Doyle paved the path. Now it's our job to preserve it. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Matt, do we have another caller?
Yes, we do. And I will take them right now. You're live with the school board.
Hi, my name is Nina Merkert, I have three children in the district, one in the middle school, two in the high school, and I have a spouse that also teaches in the district. And I'm hearing a lot of frustrations from parents tonight, and I understand it, but I just wanted to say that I appreciate the, um, I appreciate the district wanting to keep everybody in our community safe, and that although it might be a little bit slow going, I think it's important, and I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Matt, do we, uh...
Uh, one, one more caller.
All right, go ahead. We got the last couple of moments.
Okay, caller, you're live.
Hi, my name is Nina Merkert, I have three children in the district. I have one in the middle school, two in the high school, and I have a spouse that teaches in the district as well, and I just wanted to say thank you for really working hard at keeping our children...
I am so sorry about that. Uh, caller, caller, you're live.
Go ahead, caller.
Uh, nope, they just dropped it, so, uh, as of right now, we have the, we have that Wayne Merkert person still on the line, but I think we can, uh, we can go.
Okay. I'm going to ask that maybe, maybe skip over the new school, like there's something really important, there's been such a long nightmare.
It's safety breakdown by all of us.
Okay, all right, good, good. So, uh, before we settle, facilities committee, is there any, what updates that we need to be given?
The facilities committee, the one piece is we're waiting for something from SEP. We have the, uh, Health Department, Suffolk Health Department, as soon as we get that piece of information in, we're going to be ready to go in terms of bidding for the bus block. Um, so, and they're really making some very nice progress on kitchen. You guys have a chance, the very, glad to bring you there. Um, they, I, I don't know if they started the sheet rocking, but all the studs, the metal studs were up, concrete floor, uh, plate, we're in really good shape that night, so the projects are moving forward.
Election Day, the district is closed, so...
Right, district is closed, and we're going to work on a plan for everyone staying home.
Anything else we need to discuss tonight, if we adjourn?
We have, do we have a...
We are, yeah. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session for matters of personnel. Round motion? I may give second.
Second.
On the favor?
JP, JP, are we coming back or no?
Won't be coming back.
We're not coming back, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, guys.